Mr. Chairman, we're back again.
Okay, welcome back, everybody online. We're in the afternoon session of October 23rd. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is to finish paying the claims and borderer claims that were presented this morning. We have a few more that have showed up since, so I would entertain a motion for that process.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the additional payments as requested by our clerk's office.
I'm just saying, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There you go.
You're gonna double check those and make sure they're all not duplicates?
Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is a discussion and a decision with our IT director Jeremy Wilcox to allow one-time expenditure out of our supply budget for IT equipment. But you didn't show up this morning for the department head report.
I didn't. Good afternoon. I apologize. I was working on something and it hit my brain. I looked up and it was like 10:45 and I was like, oh my goodness.
Oh.
You know, when you get deep involved in something, you just kinda, time just kinda goes away.
Yeah, I get that. So what do you want to do here?
So, the reason this came up is because in the last couple of months, towards the end of and most of it after the budgets had kind of all closed, I've had multiple departments request for their employees to increase productivity and make things easier, a second monitor for their desk. Now, traditionally, for reasons I'm not, that don't really matter and I'm not gonna get into, that hasn't been a thing that has been entertained here for a long time. I personally don't care if people have a second. It doesn't bother me one way or the other. I do know that some, for some job functions, it can make things easier. There were some discussions regarding sort of trying to make a decision on like who should or shouldn't get one, who deserves one. I thought about it for a long time and did some research and I would have a hard time doing that because I don't do everybody's job. So if I came up with some framework to say, this is, this is what would allow you to have one versus not, it would be just some arbitrary thing from my head. And like I said, I don't do other people's jobs. Like, I if it was a, we're just gonna deny it across the board or because of budgetary concerns, nobody gets one, that, I'm, I'm fine making that decision. But as far as getting into deciding who should or shouldn't have one, I don't necessarily think it would be fair for one person to determine that. And on top of that, I honestly don't, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me if somebody has a second monitor.
It was your predecessor's policy that, that's why.
Yes, that's one of the things that I wasn't, I'm not gonna worry about getting into. So that's not the problem. The prob, the decision and the problem isn't whether we should or shouldn't allow it, unless you have, have thoughts on that, which is, that's, that's fine.
Strictly budget.
Because most of it came in kind of later in the year, I didn't budget for it. So the, the little bit, the little bit of money that I put in my, because I'm not, you know, doing any projects or working on anything this, this next fiscal year. A little bit of money that I put in there is kind of like a, an emergency fund, sort of. A server dies, somebody, you know, a new employee gets hired and they need a phone or a scanner or something. If I buy a bunch of monitors out of it before the fiscal year has even gotten started, I'm gonna wipe out half it.
Yep, you're gonna lose it on the other end.
So, and I'm not saying that I will necessarily need it this year, but it's so early in the process that I, I don't know if I'm gonna need it in the middle of summer or whatever. So if I spend it all right now, then I'm kind of myself into a possible problem. So.
So is it just a few individuals that are asking for it?
So the current actual requests, about 20.
Wow.
And the other thing is, is that if we change our stance on this and we start giving them to people, other people are gonna.
Absolutely. Everybody will request it.
So my thoughts on the budget part of it were.
I don't see how they work without him. I'm not gonna lie. I've had double monitors for my entire working career.
And if you, if you do research online, it, it does help with, you know, certain jobs and things like that. So this is purely a budget discussion. So the three options I kind of came up with are option number one, the hard, I guess the hard-nosed option would be
Yeah.
No for anybody this year, fiscal year '25, anybody who has a request, we will request that as part of the fiscal year '25 budget. Option number two is to allow it and pay for it for somewhere, ARPA, PIL, wherever. I don't know if you feel when I do that. The other option I thought of and the reason that that action item was worded the way it was, and I wanna be very careful because I wanna make sure that it is understood, because I, I feel that any IT hardware should be sourced from and paid for out of the IT budget. So this would be a very one-time, only this one specific thing, this one specific fiscal year only, if an elected official or department head requested and approved for their department to have a second monitor. And they have somewhere in their budget that they can pay for it out of. We will still source the equipment, buy it, but we will buy it for them for only this fiscal year and then fiscal year '25, anything that's left over, we can budget for any requests that are left over at that time. And even if they do want a second monitor now, if they don't have it within their budget somewhere to pay for it, then they, they have to wait for fiscal year '25. So those are kind of the three
Reason why we, we, we had that policy years ago was, it was a budget. We just thought, felt like, you know, it's a luxury, they can still do their job with one.
Yeah.
And we just felt like we, for the taxpayers, we gotta run it as cheap as we could. However, I think that your idea of taking it out of their own office budget or their own supply budget for that department is the only way I could support it. I don't think we should take ARPA funds or PILs or anything else or something like this. That's my vote.
And, and I do understand that, especially this one year, for this first year. I mean, if they feel like it's important enough for their position to have it, then they're gonna have to self-fund it because I don't think we should take it out, out of reserve funds either. But I will tell you that in banking, even with this job, I am constantly back and forth between two screens. I could not have done my job in banking very efficiently. So I think we'll see productivity go up if you give them the tools that they need to be successful.
Can you buy, can you split a monitor into two? Because I thought they came out with that technology.
I wouldn't be able to read it. I mean, if you're talking numbers.
Because the words are too small.
It's too small.
I mean, you can split windows and put them beside each other on the same monitor, but it squishes each window once you're scrolling back and forth.
I use a dual monitor at my Northern office. I mean, I.
What do you want to do, boss?
And again, make sure that it is understood.
He's got two monitors at his desk.
She's one of the ones. You, you weren't the first.
Come on up and comment.
For me, it's an as-need thing. If somebody needs it, it pushes the boat.
Yeah, I sent Jeremy an email a few weeks ago asking about dual monitors for my office and there's two things in particular. Well, I asked when I first was appointed and got the rundown of, of the budget and the history and why we don't have them. But a couple of things have happened recently that I think require the dual monitors. So first of all, in the treasurer's office specifically, when we do the split screen, the way that the tax program and our credit card entry point work, you're not able to actually split screen and be able to see all the fields that you need to do to take payments over the phone. So it actually takes a couple more minutes in the process because we're having to switch back and forth on the screens. Whereas if we were able to have dual monitors, we could have the tax information up on one screen and the credit card payment information up on the other, our time on the phone with customers would probably be cut in half.
So how many would you need? Three or one?
Screens.
Yeah. I mean, for every employee or just?
Every employee. Yep. In, in the treasury world, when we are working on multiple spreadsheets at a time and when we're using softwares and spreadsheets, the ability to toggle between screens, it, it just takes time. And, you know, trying to remember numbers when you go from one screen to the next screen, it helps prevent errors. The other thing is this new Tyler Technologies runs off of a, and I'm gonna get this acronym wrong, but it's like a VPN connection into the software, which is wonderful. It's great for security purposes. It's great for storage purposes and whatnot. But the problem is, is once you have that program open, you can't toggle easily between screens. It's like you have to close down the program or minimize the program and then go to a different screen. You can't split screen with, with this particular program. So, um, I have always had multiple screens and I think that it would, it would increase the efficiency in my office by orders of magnitude. It would be extremely beneficial.
Which again, I'm, I'm fine with all that. It's just where to pay for them out of.
So Doug, if we were to go through with this and buy screens now, that would affect your cash carryover at the end of budget, right?
Not necessarily. If the departments use their existing supply budgets to purchase these monitors and then they would have to watch those supply budgets very carefully so they don't go over.
How much is a monitor?
Pretty much everyone that, supply budgets that have been presented.
That's a great question and the answer is.
Supplies that they have determined that they need.
Can I buy a cheap pinky little thing for a hundred bucks? Yes. Can I buy some refurbished thing that's five years old for a hundred bucks? Yes. To buy the, the ones that we usually get that are, that are new and look halfway nice, they're about $310.
You said you needed 20 of them?
Right now, but again, that's what I'm saying. The, the, for instance, the assessor's office, how many people are down there? They've, even back when the predecessor was here, have struggled and fought for that for many years. So that's why I'm saying when, once people know that this option has been opened up, it's gonna be, I feel like it's gonna be more than that as the year goes along.
Make sure whatever you do, that they know they have to order through you.
Yep, absolutely. And, and again, this, this one budget year only for this one specific item. I don't wanna set a precedent that people can, you know, buy IT things out of their own budget. This is just kind of a one-time exception because of the timing and when people started requesting them.
So Joanna, do you have enough in your supply budget to buy every one one?
My supply budget is $2,500 per year. It would cost my office 1,200. So it'd take half of my supply budget, which I'd have to run some calculations and see if we could survive on that.
What I'm trying to get to, I guess, is that maybe you because of taxes and we're all, the budget, that we do one per department per year until they all have them. I'm trying to figure out how to do that though.
I think it's more, in my opinion, based on need.
I think once the budget cycle comes around for fiscal year '25, we can get everybody's requests and then request that as part of my, my budget at that time. It's just fiscal year '24. To Joanna's point, if I purchased everybody who needs them out of my hardware budget that I only have a little bit in for emergencies, then it's gonna wipe a third or a half out of it, just right out, right off the, right off the rip.
What do you want to do, boss?
I think if they have the money to buy it this year, they can buy them this year, however many, you know, is, is critical to their division. And then if they don't get them, then we will put it in the budget for next year. And that is a motion I would make.
You know, that, that makes a lot of sense. You know, whether we run it short and tight this year, we wait till we make sure fully funded, it's kind of a wash. And if you get short, you know, always come back and beg. No, we just cut everybody's salaries.
That way it doesn't go through.
She's, she's making more money off this ARPA stuff with this interest.
You can have a second monitor, but it's gonna be a one-time deduction from your paycheck. Joking, jokey, jokey. On the record, joking.
Or we could take it, a one-time payment.
The 30,000 that you budgeted for IT equipment, that's what you were talking about.
Yes.
You don't think you'll need that for other stuff?
That's what I'm saying. I only have that little bit in there for emergencies.
And we need 30,000 to buy 20 of them.
Yeah, that would be, that would be half of it right off the top if I bought 20 monitors right now.
And I think the reason I feel this way is because this should have been addressed prior to budget, be in this budgeting year if it was a critical issue. Now, I do understand the fact that Jeremy was probably hard-nosed about it before now and now he's softened his stance a bit when he knows the need. It wasn't Jeremy, actually, it was by somebody else. But now that we've identified the need, you know, if it is critical to a division, they're gonna find the money within their division. If they, if it's not critical, they will wait until next year when we can buy it on their behalf. So.
What are we, Doug? We're, we're just starting in. What are, I'm thinking general fund reserve.
What are we doing with all, I haven't asked this question before.
Then you're gonna have everybody ask for one.
All the money that we're getting off of the interest, off the ARPA, where's that interest going?
Into your pocket?
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna have that conversation, but not this week. So there is some ideas.
There's a lot of people that want that interest. Recreation's been looking at it for some of their projects. It's all the same money in the end, if you really think about it.
It's all just piling up on the ARPA end.
How do you guys feel about taking it out of general fund reserve or 30,000 would buy you 20, right?
15,000.
Yeah, and, and depending on, you know, we get discounts through like Dell for, for government and then for a certain number. So it could be, you know, we might be able to get down in the 250s or 280s somewhere, so.
That's not really fair because Jeremy has a list of 20 right now. However, there's a lot of people that were pre-asking without being on that list.
Yeah, like I said, the assessor's office.
So then we're gonna have unhappy people if we do it that way.
So then if they ask them, they're gonna need another 20, so. I feel like if we're gonna do a.
Do what?
$6,000.
6,000?
Yeah. And he just said he might get them from 285.
Yeah, I might be able to shave that a little bit, depending how many we buy at one time.
What I'm wondering is if we can pay us to have you go back and do a quick online survey, how many you think you're really gonna need to make everybody happy this year? If it's 20 or 40, then come back to us and say, 37 is a magic number and then we can figure out how to pay for it then.
Well, I feel like the only way to really do that would be to blast out an email to everybody and then everybody's gonna be like me.
Everybody wants one.
We'll get a count then.
What's your thought process with not just allowing them to do it out of their own budgets?
120-ish employees.
Well, let's say we use half of Jeremy's 30,000 office supply and then we come back and we need to buy a new speaker, a new whatever, and he doesn't have the funds and he'll, he'll be here asking it out of, out of PILs or general fund reserve or whatever.
I don't wanna do it out of his budget.
It's the same, it's the same money, all of it in the end.
Right, true.
But I don't, I don't wanna use Jeremy's, but what I'm saying is, is if Johanna has something in her budget to buy them.
Like Neil said, she'll have to come in and beg for it.
I don't understand your guys' thought process on this one.
If they spend all their, all the supply money up and then something comes along where they need more, they don't have the money, then they'll have to come to us and ask for that.
But that's an if that's out there. I mean, if they know they've, they've spent all their supply budget, they're gonna be a little more frugal with their supplies this year and, you know.
Doug, you know that all the departments have enough in their supply budget to get?
I, I would say no, Mr. Chairman.
Because we're just looking at assess, appraisers that had 2,000, I think, in their supply. That's not enough.
Yeah, the department that asked was civil and I know that they probably have jail or, you know, they have various places that they would probably.
Well, the jail has lots of monitors.
Figure out taking it out of.
Then you guys are just wanting to go ahead and approve it out of some budget that we currently have, what you're saying.
Yeah.
But what if it's 100 monitors?
Yeah, what if it doesn't? So I'm saying, if it does end up being everybody, then that's, you know, 30, 50,000.
Would it be 100 monitors? Do you think it'd be that many?
I don't, but that, that's just my opinion. You're probably not gonna have anyone at the, at the road department, right? Probably not gonna have any of the patrol, but maybe the sergeants, I guess.
I would say Mickey Mine and the person that's actually doing the input.
I mean, we, I can tell you, we have 118 PCs out there that have a monitor attached to them.
What's that number?
So if you did the whole gambit, 35,000, 28,000, something like that.
35,400. That's the most.
That's worst case, everybody wants a second monitor attached to their computer.
If they want it.
If they want it. I'm not saying everybody will necessarily.
Or need them. See, that's more where I'm at. Do you really need a second?
Yeah, but that goes back to, it's hard to, it's hard to tell somebody they don't need it.
That caused issues years ago.
Especially when you're buying it for other people.
Yeah.
I follow you.
So that's where the worms can open.
Then they go all over the floor and then we're bad guys.
Or you could also say we ain't got enough to do 40 of them this year in our budget. Maybe wanna see more, but, but next year's budget.
We could do that. We could prioritize who's already asked.
And next year, we can put that into supply budget. Or we could say, you gotta buy them out of your supply budget this year. If you don't have enough money, you'll have to wait till next year. I don't know. What do you guys wanna do?
I already told you, I already made a motion.
What was your motion again? What was your motion?
That we allow the departments to apply, buy them out of their supply budgets this year if they have the funding available and if not, they have to wait till next year.
Is there a second? I'll second it, I guess.
Oh, you can put it on the floor and put up your own. You know, don't second it. Put out your own.
It's, I mean, I don't care. If they can buy them out of their own budget, that's fine.
They have to come and ask for money later, then we'll have to come and ask for money.
So either way, it's, they may come back just for more money, so.
Hey, we got a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, this doesn't come out of your supply budget.
Hey, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
This one time, this one year, if this one specific thing, and that's it. Okay, that's all I have.
I want a second monitor, please.
Here, you can have mine.
We don't have a supply budget.
Do you guys have a supply budget?
You actually do have a supply budget.
What? We do? Well, then we'll be talking. Oh, I'll make do with mine.
Okay.
I just know this. This is so funny to see how this is.
$1,000 in your supply budget.
How this was 10 years ago to where we are finally now. It's kinda fun.
If I want one, I'll buy one because I did my keyboard, my mouse and everything else, so.
Did you buy it through Jeremy? Did you violate policy and buy it on your own?
We're not on the network. So I bought my own.
Okay, we're done?
Yep, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Oh geez, Cameron, we got three more minutes. Are you ready? Come on up.
You buy your best assistant ever. He emailed it to us this morning.
Was there anyone that I needed to, that was gonna appear virtually? Nope. Okay.
I do have a PowerPoint presentation.
So the one you sent this morning was that one?
Yes, that is the, the final.
The final, final?
Unless, of course, you guys have other edits you'd like me.
What was your, is that your daughter?
That is my daughter.
Mabel?
Mabel.
Mabel, do you wanna come up here and sit at the big table? Wanna come up here? Come on up to the table. Mr. Thompson down there has some Peanem and Ms. if you want.
He do have some M and Ms.
Dad just went, no.
Hannah's got crayons and a drawing board.
Oh, she's got a coloring book?
Oh, she's, she's got it.
She's gonna be doing public presentations before she's 10, Cameron. Put her on board.
It's some kind of a sadistic thing, father parenting thing. I don't know. Let's see.
No, that's a good thing.
She's even got the big chair. Good job.
You're looking good, girl. You're looking really good.
My parents put me in a scene group in fifth grade and that's why I can do public speaking.
You were out, out in front a lot, yeah. Oh man, well.
Welcome. I don't know where to start on this. I, I think Sherry had some comments on it earlier that I missed that we might wanna talk about, but everything else looked
He actually did.
Pretty good.
He has a baby picture right on his.
Oh, you wanna see that too? This is a baby Calvin.
Oh my goodness, how old now?
Now, what, four months?
Oh, that's the best. That's awesome. Congratulations. Beautiful baby.
Yep. Well, Mr. Chair and members of the, of the commission, it is a pleasure to be with you back at it again, right? So this is the final iteration. We received some updates to the, the previous draft of the plan. I'm just gonna focus you on, to a few high-level points to elaborate, but it's also, this is a big deal. We, we as a group, as a consultancy as well as, you know, certainly including Johanna and Doug in this, what, what an awesome opportunity it's been to take this deep dive and to then zoom back out and say, what does a good facility and finance plan look like for the county?
Wait one second. Is that, Doug, did you turn on that microphone?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead. I know that the newspaper's been listening to this.
Yes.
Is the battery dead again?
It's a light, so.
You have to hold the button down till the light comes on. Here, do you want, let me put mine down there.
Talk into it, Cameron, see if we can hear it.
Can you hear me?
No, I don't know that it's on.
Not amplifying it.
Well, maybe the other one.
That's okay.
It's definitely on.
It is? The green light is on? Okay, maybe just have to speak right into it.
What do we can do about you then, Mr. Chair? You're gonna share with Doug, okay. All right, hopefully that's, that's better.
We got it covered anyway, so.
So just, again, just really appreciate this opportunity and then to be here at this point is, is, is monumental. So just to really appreciate the, where we are and, and all the effort that's gone into it. So what I plan to do is just give you a high-level overview. This is maybe more for the public's interest. Then also do kind of a detailed high level of what is in the plan and then specifically talk about a few next steps. Oftentimes what happens is, is you get this plan delivered and, and then everyone goes and does what they do every day. That's not the intent of this, as you'll recall. This is meant to be a living, breathing, operational plan that the county can update and utilize as, as it moves forward with its vision and future. So with that, just a really high-level view of, of what this process entails. And we're talking just the planning portion of what we'd consider a comprehensive process, which would be, you know, you plan what your needs are, you identify maybe ways to fund those needs. If there's need to, you know, bond or borrow to effectuate that plan and there's some authorization process, whether it's an election or some other means, there's a finance process to, to get the funds necessary. And then, of course, there's a construction process as well. And then that all circulates, right? The needs of the county never go away. They just ebb and flow as, as we move down time. And underpinning all of that is a, is a public engagement element, to make sure that the public is aware of what's going on, has a, a feedback loop or an input in a number of ways and we've kind of talked about a few of those. We'll talk about a few more as we go. But again, that's, that's the comprehensive process. Again, if, if we're just zoomed in here on the first section, the planning piece of it, I would just reiterate, this was mentioned a number of times from stakeholders. Um, I would just reiterate, um, this was mentioned a number of times from stakeholder groups. Uh, other municipal entities, uh, businesses that we interviewed and, um. Were a part of, uh, the plan, this planning process. There was a, a high level of gratitude and appreciation that the county was actually going through this exercise. That, um, reaching out to other people, getting their input, what's on their plate. What are they looking for in the future as well? How can the county make sure that it's contemplating those needs as well? Um, just to, just across the board. Uh, uh, appreciation there. And we'll talk about that as a, as one of the major key, key takeaways as well from the plan. So diving into just the, the specific high level. Um, wanted to just talk through the, this was, um, post the, uh, update that we provided you last time we met. Um, this comes from the conclusion recommendation section, uh, of the document. And so it really kind of just puts a fine point on what were the specific projects? What are the specific recommendations off of each of those pro- uh, projects? And, uh, what, what's to be done going forward? So you can kind of see here, um, Gold Dust is an obvious one. Uh, you know, uh, it, it kind of is a casc- has a cascading effect, pun intended. Um, where if we can, if we can get Gold Dust rolling. And where there's funds for it in the, in the, uh, the public will, the internal operational will to get it rolling. You not, you not only benefit the road and bridge department, it also starts the, uh, the facilitation of the fairgrounds. What needs to occur there. It's, it's, there's, there's a compounding effect. Also, from a financial perspective, um, when you consider ARPA dollars, it's, makes sense, uh, to ta- tackle. One-time capital type needs with that money. You tend to get your biggest bang for your buck in doing that. As opposed to borrowing so on and so forth, where you pay interest over time. In the interest of the, uh, comprehensive financial plan, this makes a lot of sense. And so from that fiduciary municipal advisory role that we play. This is a, is a clear, uh, recommendation that, uh, makes sense. Really appreciate that the, the county's already going, going down that path. Full, fully, uh, you know, again, meant to be. Kind of thirty thousand foot with this, with the, with the plan itself, but the fact that the county's already moving in that direction. One hundred percent makes sense and, and, uh, and, uh, recommend that you continue to do so with that project. And again, you'll note in the plan, there are general timelines for all of these projects. So I just want you back to that. If you want the detail of these things, you can go and, and dig deeper into the, into the plan there. That then leads to, uh, the second, uh, major recommendation, which is the courthouse, um, e- expansion renewal project. Um, this, again, we feel from a financial perspective, makes a lot of sense. Consolidating, uh, services, upgrades, particularly to, you know, HVAC systems, things like that are gonna. Generate a lot of efficiency and a lot of cost savings. Not to mention, you know, hard to quantify, but employee retention, uh, work for, or work environment. Uh. Uh, yeah, uh, all of those things included. Uh, this can be, uh, a, a major boon for, for the county and its needs going forward. Not only its, its immediate needs, but certainly its, its future needs.
So if we're using, um, just like Judy was in here the other day talking about, um. Thermal? We're heating the courthouse and.
Geothermal?
Yeah, geothermal.
So appreciate that, uh, Commissioner Thompson, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thompson, that's, that's a great point. This came up multiple times in the, uh, citizens committee, uh, process. Um, this is definitely something from, uh, our architect partners recommended that the county explore. And I think it's, there's a, there's kind of a cool nexus with this where. There's some engineering and architecture associated with, okay, what does this mean? What is the capacity for it? Then based on that, we can do a financial analysis to say, hey, does this make sense financially to implement? Geothermal in a future design of, of the courthouse project. So, long story short, it's absolutely documented in the plan that the county explore that. That would be down the road when we get into, you'll see here, uh, to plan for, uh, planning and design of the courthouse. Facility in the twenty FY twenty twenty-five budget. Essentially, when you guys start your next budget cycle. Start thinking about, uh, making sure that that, uh, there's some funds there to, to start into that process. That's where this, this component would come into play, Commissioner Thompson. And making sure that we're looking at all of this to make sure we're getting the best design, best cost, best efficiency for, for the county.
Best bang for our buck.
Yep. Granted, this is a major, major project, so not, no blinders here. Uh, but we're talking, hey, scraping any, any additional ARPA funds that are available, if they're available. Um, surplus properties, maybe looking at how to generate some revenue there. Um, potentially budgeting, carving out, uh, any chunks of budget that can be dedicated to. This project for the next three or four or five years, kind of bank a down payment, if you will. Anything that we can do to lower that capex that ultimately would impact a taxpayer. What this will, uh, unfortunately, i- it, there's a funding gap. It's, it's impossible for Valley County to find that much money.
But, but Cameron, if we end up with, like, I think this year, Doug, it was a little over two million in cash carryover. It, but.
But that's used to fund our upcoming budget, right?
Well, that's the thing, you know, some, that's the question I have for you is that. Some of the commissioners I've talked to says, we take any cash carryover and put it in a separate designated fund. And budget starts completely over again without carrying that into next year. That's how they save money. That's how Doug did some of that for their courthouse up there. With the bridge work and stuff they've done. Instead of putting it in the next year's budget, they stuff it into another trust and build it that way.
How do they make it between tax collections?
So.
Some of that's just to be able to make it between tax collections. They don't have any income really, but from, you know, July one until December one.
So I think, if I might, and this is more maybe what you're thinking, maybe not, but just the way I would think about this is. The county has essentially, uh, a, a levy that it, it, it will apply. And that will generate X amount of dollars. Regardless of how you skin that, that's how much money you have to play with. Sometimes, you know, ARPA or PILT or whatever, but. Generally speaking, that's your, that's your revenue stream. So what we would be proposing here, and you, uh, don't do a perfect job articulating it. Is basically saying, the commission could carve out a certain section of its annual revenue. And dedicate it to a capital facility fund or something like that. That's not uncommon where you're not, you're not, uh, doing anything different than you would normally, but you're saying, hey, look, this is a dedicated. Fund that we're gonna start, uh, putting money into, to put towards this project. Um, the reason you do that is, from an annual perspective. That's a lot more palatable than a big chunk of money, trying to figure that out. Whereas if you have time, in this case, maybe, maybe three or four years before you're going to construct. That, that annual, uh, funding can become a, a little bit more sizable. A little bit more palatable from an annual budgeting perspective.
Well, you have two million in cash carryover, which is in the budget. Everything is, you know, it's just positions that you didn't fill or costs you didn't get. And say you took half of that, a million dollars of it. You're gonna put that into capital improvement fund, and then the rest will put in the next year's budget. And you do that for three or four years, you've got four million bucks saved up. Issue that you have is politically, the taxpayer's going, why are you guys saving this money? So you gotta be able to explain to them, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna need a new courthouse here really quick. And we're trying to help save it, and hopefully they, they like it. Sometimes they don't.
Uh, Commissioner Hasburg, that's exactly what we're talking about here is because you now have a plan. When you come to that discussion in your budget, budget conversation, that's where you can say. Hey, look, this is according to our plan. We're trying to limit the impact of this major capital project. On our taxpayers. This is how we as a county can collectively. Um, buy that down or contribute to that in a meaningful way. Of course, the concern is, and I'm not naive to this either, you are carving that out. It's, it's a limited resource. Something else is gonna have to give. So I'm just planting that as a potential option in a way, uh, that hopefully. Doesn't sacrifice meaningful services and other things in the budget. That can, you know, help the county towards that goal of, of getting this major capital project done.
It's similar to what we did when we passed that twenty-eight million dollar bond. The school district spent thirty-four million that year. We had squirreled away six million dollars for stuff. And it, glad we did.
Did you guys get any grants on that, or was that just a direct voter override?
That was just a voter divestment bond.
I think there is grants for schools, but.
Hard to find.
Um. The other thing.
There might be in our case if we go geothermal.
Sure, there could be.
There's a lot of grants kicking in on that kind of stuff.
The other thing to think about as we go forward is Doug and you did a fabulous job with creating a PILT fund. And because it was a savings account, people have come after that PILT fund. And so now we're down to what I consider to be absolutely minimum in that PILT fund just for health and safety. Um, concerns within the county. And so what this does is it puts it into a capital fund where that fund is specifically identified. And not just available for people going, well, you've got PILT. Come and take PILT. And.
Yeah, and before we had PILT, all we had was general fund reserve, which was three hundred and fifty thousand, and that was our emergency money. And it's like.
It's just not enough in today's world.
Skinny, skinny.
Yeah, that's, that's just not even.
That keeps you awake at night.
No, PILT needs to be a million and five, you know, at the minimum.
You know, if we don't spend it, let's put that in the capital improvement fund.
Well, you never know when you're gonna spend it. I mean, that's, you gotta have some kind of a minimum. Uh, you some, you gotta have some savings account somewhere in case we have an emergency in Valley County that we have to fund immediately. And that's what I consider PILT to be.
And see, and I used to consider a general fund reserve was our emergency money.
And two, two thoughts on this, just real quick. Um, I know Johanna's gonna jump out a receipt here or two to talk about it, but. As part of our engagement, and we'll get to this as well. Um, we are going to, uh, come back to you, uh, in partnership with Johanna. With some financial, uh, policy procedure, uh, that will, um. Really help everyone kind of nail that down. What are some?
Okay.
Good, good, basic, uh, kind of credit type policies that really set that up for the future. So it's not, it's, it's codified, codified as, as opposed to maybe what feels right or whatever. So that way, um, in the future, commission changes over, what have you. There's a policy driving the where and why things are happening the way they are, and this would fall within that.
And I think that's really important. Cause, you know, people do change on this, and some are conservative, some are liberal, and, and you lose the mission.
Longevity.
Lose the mission because somebody goes left and right or whatever. And you've got it committed in a plan, then it's pretty solid.
Yes, and so, and then to piggyback on this as well, um, so there's the, the policy and procedure side. But one thing that I would say, as opposed to just a fund balance that's carried over. Giving that money some definition. Helps from a, a public perspective. They know that their tax dollar is going towards something. It's not just the county. Lack of better term, hoarding it. There's a reason. The other is to, um, hate to say it, but just, uh, being conscientious of our legislature. They, they, they take a hard look at those and say, well, gosh, are we taxing our people too much? Cause they're hoarding cash. Well, in reality, we all know that that's not the case. It's just, you're trying to be prudent. Save up some money for a big capital project. But unless there's, you know, some definition to that, it's lost, right? Nobody, nobody.
Ammunition for Mike Moyle.
Why aren't you, why aren't you fixing my roads?
So I, though, all those things kind of being considered, um, that is something that we would recommend. You know, it coming up in the budget process, carving that out, giving it some definition and dedication. And then marrying that up with some of the work we'll do with Johanna with the policies and procedures.
Yep. Johanna, I know you wanna talk. What do you wanna say? Tell.
I, I didn't have any comments. I just, um, I'm thankful that we're starting to work on these investment policies and cash management policies. Um, I had my first meeting last week, and I'm excited about getting those set in stone. Because as a new treasurer, not coming from anywhere in the government in the county, I really looked for guiding documents like that, and there weren't any. So I'm excited to prepare those for future treasures, for future commissioners, and for anybody who wants to interact with the county.
Coming from the public, I asked for the same documents when I got here, and I was like, what do you mean you don't have a cash?
Right, yeah, so we're.
Even though these guys did, it just wasn't on paper, so I will give them credit for what they were planning. It's just not on paper. We've got to document it.
Well, and, and you, in this job, you have to learn to be really flexible. The discussion earlier with Jeremy about the monitors, it's all the same money in the end. It's just where do you, where do you take it from and how do you work?
Yeah, well said. And, and hopefully this, this gives that some structure. Um, so that even those kinds of conversations are, are much. Expeditious, clear. They, staff knows what they can and can't do. If it's gonna require a major change, then it's, it's a policy discussion as opposed to, you know, a back and forth negotiation on something, if that makes sense. But not to make that the, you know, the case study. It's just, again, giving, giving some structure to, to how things are, are done.
The other issue that I think is important, even though it's not a lot of money that we're talking about, is. It would be really cool to know if we add on a new facility here that's ten or fifteen thousand more square feet and more offices. How much more is it gonna cost us to heat it and wire it and all that? External costs that you have no control over versus what we have now. If we can come in at the same cost as to run it as the sole facility, man, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I think, uh, a lot of that will come in the planning and design, particularly of this, of this, uh, proposed courthouse upgrade. I think, um, that, that's a, a very logical, uh, thing. It would be something I think the public would be very interested in as well. It's like, hey. Yeah, we know you need the space. Yeah, we know that one's old, but what's really the benefit to the public to make this upgrade? And you're right, there is a, maybe not a perfect apples to apples, but we should be able to give some of that detail that can help reinforce that decision.
If these guys decide to go with geothermal, at that equation too, as well, we're actually gonna have lower expenses because we're using geothermal heat.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, that's why, you know, the planning and design of, of it is so, so critical. Um, and then just the last thing we've mentioned here is, you know, obviously there's going to be a, a funding gap. And so getting, getting the public, getting, uh, the county, you know, geared up for what that means, that's a, that's a bond. Uh, and it's, uh, like, it's going to require a public engagement process as well to make sure. People know what the need is, know what it's gonna cost them, know what that solution is, to your point. Hey, why is this a good thing? And then hopefully that helps them make a good decision on, on election.
Okay, and we're gonna have a lot of competition for that. There's a lot of other bonds being floated at the same time.
Yes, and, um, yep, we've been doing some research on that. Uh, we, we expect to get you, uh, the commission, uh, a memo on that here shortly. And not comprehensive, not set in stone, but what's everybody thinking? That, that should be a good, good data point for you all. Get your.
Have you factored out that? Yeah, I don't, say we do this. Yeah, I don't say we do this in five years and you probably have a number already ballpark.
Oh, for the amount?
To do this project.
Yeah, so let me just pull up the.
On page six or page twenty-five, I should say.
Yes.
And it was a little over twenty million, but then we secure the parking lot, it's another three million underneath, so it'd be twenty-three million.
There you go.
So if you.
My my question on that is, this doesn't include the expense to house employees somewhere else while we're building the thing?
It does not. This is just the conservative estimate of the construction.
Yeah, twenty-three million. Paul, would that factor in for five more years down the road?
Yeah, so it's a great question. Um you know, there's there's definitely a factor there. It's not gonna get cheaper, I guess. We do try to be conservative in this estimate. You know, we're we're high as far as a per square foot. You know, I get not knowing exactly what's gonna go into the, you know, hundred percent design of the structure. But again, being being conservative, this is a a number that we're comfortable with in today's dollars. But to your point, Commissioner Thompson, time uh is gonna have an impact on this.
Have you guys put a timeline, say you'd like to see this done in five years?
Yep, so we have just down here at the bottom here, uh and yeah, to, you know, and you guys know this, but to the public's interest, you can see here an estimated timeline for when and how this would would happen. You're really looking at, so design, so assuming that it's budgeted in the twenty-twenty-five budget, uh you'd be looking at uh starting design in January, so right out of the gate. Um bid, selection, uh public engagement campaign, um and then potential financing early twenty-twenty-six with construction starting in twenty-twenty-six and then looking at occupancy potentially in the fall of twenty-twenty-seven. So you're talking a, you know, this is a, this would be a major, you're taking.
That would all depend on floating a bond. So Cameron, if we went with the lease option, when we we have to run that election?
So.
That would be two years?
It's something that we'd need to analyze, Commissioner Hasbrook, because as you recall, the lease option does not create an additional revenue stream. So we'd be just pledging whatever, you know, goes into that annual uh facility, capital facility fund or whatever, whatever that's called. So you would be, a-again, haven't ran the numbers, but you'd be talking a big chunk of money that would be coming out of the the county's annual budget.
Just a rough guess, what would the it the lease payment be on a twenty million dollar facility?
Um.
Off the top of your head really fast.
I mean, you're you're. Please don't, please don't keep me to that. So it would be more expensive from an interest perspective, right? Cause you're talking an annual appropriation as opposed to an ad verum tax on property, property owners in the county. Um but i- it's gonna be multi-millions of dollars. It's that's not an insignificant number.
We just can't afford it. I mean, you just can't afford.
You'll have those numbers for us eventually.
Yes, it'll be a part of that whole process once we get into it is, what is this actually? What is this number and how do we make sure it's a nut we can crack? And how do we crack it?
Well, just keep thinking if Joanna keeps making all this interest off our ARPA funds, we're just getting onto that and use that to make our payment.
Arbitrage that.
I can't be.
You're in charge.
I can't be held to whatever the treasury standards are going to be. I I can't predict the future.
She's good, but not pressing.
Four hundred thousand we're making a year doesn't come close to touching a lease payment, so. Cameron, one of the questions, uh well, I have two questions. One, so we're gonna have to fund planning within, you know, within the next couple of years, so we need to know what that cost would be so that we know, you know, for certain how to plan for that. And then secondly, our grant writer um has been listening to this conversation and she's she's saying, I've looked for grants, you know, for courthouses and they're just few and far between.
Right.
So you've got grant opportunities on there. So if you could give us any information as far as where we could go and seek grants for this type of a deal, that would, that would be very helpful.
Yes. And we will do our best there. No, certainly agree. It's they're few and far between, but we'll scrape and claw and dig.
Yeah, and I think there's other opportunities, you know, the sale of excess land and helping set aside some of these remaining cash funds over the next couple of years. We should be able to scrape aside a good chunk of money to be able to reduce that overall bond.
Uh I think we're gonna have to use some of those assets to be able to actually do the planning on this thing. I mean, if it's a million dollars.
Plan.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would definitely have to use ARPA at that moment in time if that's what we're gonna use that for, but because I don't, I don't think, you know, that that's just not gonna come readily out of a budget. We don't have that much money in our annual budget.
Right.
We need the plans to show the public what we want to do to get the override.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And the the campaign, funding the campaign to be able to pass the bond is also an essential part of this, and that will be expensive as well.
Yeah, and I, we would be doing you a disservice if we didn't articulate that now. Um and therefore, again, in the interest of planning, try to get that that all out on the table so we can be wise about it, prudent about it, and and do it in in a way that the the public can be in as involved as possible as well. So no, these are all really good takeaways and we'll we'll certainly uh prepare to to dig, figure all that out. So let me jump back to the presentation. Any other questions on the courthouse? I mean, I'm glad that we spent a lot of time on that because it's 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 a big one.
What color paint you using?
That's a large conversation.
We will hold out on that one for sure, Commissioner Thompson. Gray of some kind.
No, I don't. I'm tired of gray and black. I shoot at it every day.
Okay, uh so diving right into the fairgrounds, uh this came out pretty, pretty loud and clear from the community. The citizens committee as well as stakeholders, that this is a huge opportunity for the county. Um obviously, without some level of investment, it it's, it will remain untapped, unrealized. Um so pretty broad support for a master planning process for the fairgrounds. Um and the idea of, given that it's economic development in nature, just pure and simple, uh it's 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 a boon to the the economy, uh future development there would would certainly be uh seen as that as well. This is a really interesting opportunity. And in I say interesting is um certainly not academic, but you have a tremendous opportunity here to really bring additional tax revenue, additional amenities to the community. And um so what you'll see here in the recommendations, uh a potential budget process or the master plan in the FY twenty-twenty-six budget. But really, a heavy emphasis on the ideas of partnerships. Um you have a fair board. There uh is going to, there is going to be a smattering of folks that are interested in partnering with the county and in doing something there, something cool. And then with that, because of the the nature of it, um it kind of unearths a whole new world of other funding opportunities that a courthouse doesn't. Nobody wants to nae, pay for the their name on a courthouse. Maybe they do. I don't know. I haven't marketed that. Doug Miller, he's got a.
Doug Miller courthouse.
There we go.
My point being, the the fairgrounds, that that's a whole new world that that could be a really cool opportunity. The other is is overlays of different uh funding strategies. So uh auditorium districts, uh this is something that is used uh across the state.
Between an auditorium and a renewal, urban renewal. Cause I thought ur- urban renewal, the tax revenue that you gain from that development goes right back into that, but we're doing this on public property, so there's no tax revenue. Is that an auditorium district then?
Great question. So let me just touch this real quickly. In the plan, and I'll reference, I won't go there, but in the back of the the actual plan is a a detailed definition of each of these, each of these tools. So you guys can really dive as deep as you want. It gives you the code references. It gives you all the detail on how they work. To be really succinct, uh Commissioner Hasbrook, um an auditorium district is a up to a five percent tax on hotel and motel cells in a given boundary. So it's not a property.
It would be Valley County. It wouldn't just.
Be, yep, it's a, it's defined basically by a petition, uh an election
Okay.
that will define the boundary as well as the amount, up to five percent. So that can be dedicated to things like fairgrounds. So convention space, auditorium space, sports facilities, all kinds of things have been funded with these. Um the uh the big ones are G vad, uh Greater Boise Auditorium District down in Boise, that funds the Boise Center where you guys had your most recent conference. Uh G vad has also funded an aquatic center, um so indoor aquatic center. Um auditorium districts have fun funded um indoor hockey stadiums over in Idaho Falls. Anyway, there's, there's a gamut of things that can be used for.
Hotels, motels, and short-term rentals?
That's a really good question. I don't know the answer.
Cameron, this is a a simple majority or two-thirds for that election?
So the creation is a simple majority to create it. Um the tax itself, so two, two layers. You have to have a petition. So it's ten percent of the uh residents of the district have to sign a petition to get it on the ballot. Then it's a fifty percent to approve the district. Then there's an additional election. Most of the time you do that in concert, it's one, at the same time, you would ask for the the tax. Um up to five percent.
And that's for the auditorium district.
And then the district would be governed by a board?
Yes, you do that, I think, same time you do the tax, don't you? Uh think about how you could sell that to your taxpayers, that people coming and staying in hotels are gonna pay for this.
And short-term rentals, hopefully.
Awesome, but I don't.
We'll look into it. I, that's a great question.
I think McCall's lot is on short-term rentals also.
Mm-hmm. You can have a a lot tax on or a lodging tax on short-term rentals on, but only within municipal boundaries. You can't do it within a county or in.
Well, only the cities get to.
Correct. So any city could incorporate a tax. But an auditorium district, if you made the boundary the same as the county, would be a way to get around that and mitigate some of the expenses that they cause our county.
So definitely an option for consideration of funding that.
Our just concern on that one is going to be, I don't know anyone in McCall that's ever attended there because it's so far away. So getting people on the north end of the boundary to approve something down here is something we are going to have to take in consideration. But if this fairgrounds was in Donley and it was in the middle of the county, I think I would have a lot greater chance of passing something like that. But I think where it's at is gonna be.
Well, and the auditorium district could have a list of projects that they're funding based on recommendation, based on the board of directors' decision, and this could be, you know, maybe the first of many.
Yeah, I guess think what kinds of uses for it at Lakeford?
Mm-hmm.
That eighty acres.
Mm-hmm.
Indoor, outdoor track, football, all that stuff.
Yep. Yep, we'll talk about that. Uh the potential uses of auditorium district are are broad and many.
Okay.
So that's, that's definitely something we'd, we'd uh ask that the county consider, continue to talk about as a potential funding mechanism for for a lot of these these opportunities. Then Commissioner uh Hasbrook, to your other question about urban renewal, um urban renewal is different in the sense that um it is not a tax per se. Um it just in a defined area, you set a base value of of what is um going to be assessed or 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 uh used to support our projects within that area. As that area becomes more valuable above that base, that what they call increment, incremental revenue, is instead of going to all the various taxing districts, goes to the urban renewal agency for specific use in that specific area. So give you a good example. So uh downtown Meridian, they had an urban renewal area right there. They um demolished one of uh an old city hall building and then donated the tax revenue that that area was generating towards a public-private partnership for parking downtown Meridian. So that's how, instead of raising taxes on everyone, they're just saying the tax revenue that's going to be generated from these developments, you know, the the fairgrounds is assessed at a value, I don't even know what it, well, it's tax exempt, so nothing now. But let's say certain portions of that were privatized or were a partnership. That revenue can then be filed right back into the, into that area to develop it, add amenities, parking, curb, gutter, sidewalk, whatever it may be, public amenities. Uh but it can be a really powerful tool when you're looking at public-private partnership type structures.
I agree with that, but in in our scenario, I don't know how U R D would even work because Cascade is desperate for tax dollars. Every one of their entities are desperate for tax dollars. And so if you create a situation where you're taking away all of their tax dollar increments and putting it into the county project that's there, we would absolutely destroy the city. City of Cascade is not on their feet to the point where we could take away any future revenue to put onto county property. So I think a U R D here is not, I I don't even see how that becomes feasible.
What I would say to that, so Commissioner Hasbrook and Commissioner Moppen, um right now Cascade is getting no value from the fairgrounds. It's tax exempt. There's no, there's no revenue there. So anything that is done there arguably would be gravy. Um granted, if the boundary was wider than the fairgrounds and you start to add other properties to try to, you know, get a you know, what do they call that? A critical mass of revenue to do sizable projects? Then then what you're talking about is completely accurate. They're they would.
Would have to be wider than ours because it's it's no taxable events. I mean, if we improve it, it's still not taxed at a higher rate.
Well, no, not necessarily, but if you had somebody came in and said, I want to lease part of that fairgrounds and build an arena for a fancy high-dollar rodeo and we're gonna pay you X amount of dollars a year for that lease, that's the kind of revenue that you would generate. And you still have your amenity that you use and you can.
Vendor a U R D.
That I agree. I don't think an urban renewal is gonna work for this one. I really like the auditorium district idea.
So just just know that those are in your, in your toolkit and could could be used.
Are you thirsty? You need some water?
Sure.
I have bottled water back here. Okay. I got, I got a chocolate milk.
What?
Dang, up in the ante.
Do you want water or chocolate milk? You look like a chocolate milk girl to me.
Oh, Elle's got her water already.
Help, get her, get her that chocolate milk that's in the refrigerator.
Want chocolate milk or water? Oh, it's too hard for me to choose. I can't do it. Here, you want me to open it for you?
You guys are sweet. Thank you.
Oh, I don't know if I can do that.
Got it.
They get water everywhere. Those bottles are terrible.
There you go. We got a little water on.
Buy them again.
Better give her some M and M's.
Give her some M and M's? Is it all sugar high?
Oh, man, you guys are spoiling you, Mabel. What do you say?
Mabel, we gotta keep you up.
What do you say, Mabel? Okay, so what I would say with these, and again, you know, budgeting the planning money in in the FY twenty-twenty-six budget, but this kind of rounds out what I would call is your your immediate future. Right? The the rest of the plan is not to diminish them in any way, but they're more of a visionary down the road. It could be brought forward for whatever reason, partnership, opportunity, whatever it may be. But we, we've given some, some higher focus, higher detail in the plan to these first three, just given their horizon.
Have you looked at? Cause I'm just learning more about jails and whatnot. Expansion of the jail because there's such a revenue stream that comes off that. Have you got that in your guys' focus?
Yes, we will get to that. That's, that, uh, let's see. Seven and eight, Commissioner Thompson. So we'll talk about those in just a moment.
Okay.
Yep. So, just real quickly, the McCall annex, again, just awesome that the county has these assets. Just really, uh, huge opportunities. Obviously, the continued collaboration with the city of McCall, their needs continue to grow. There's an, there's a good logical nexus there with public safety and, and other services. Certainly, future needs of the county make a ton of sense up there. Could be that, you know, there's some, that's a big chunk of land, so reorienting the, the traffic throughputs onto that maybe less desirable, less developable portion of the ground opens up other opportunities for other expansion, potential, you know, uh, housing, who knows? But great opportunities up there, huge boon to the county. So, yes, there's, there's some thoughts there. The plan describes some ability to, to do some of that, but not quite the detail that, you know, we're, we're looking at with these other, other projects. The Lakeford property, strategically located, great opportunity for future facilities. And particularly the idea of a future indoor sports complex. Makes a lot of sense up there. And you have a big piece of ground as well, so that could just be a project that could, that could locate there.
Is that part of, El, is that part of that ground you were talking about? McCall Superintendent? Part of that? Eighty acres to the east. You know, and I can tell Cameron, we just about finished getting the recycle building roof up and done, which is to west of the existing county shops, but um, I can see that down the road, we're, we're gonna have to do probably some stuff for another turf site.
Yeah.
Maybe even Woody biomass site. So it's kind of like, hmm, do you wanna put more money into that spot or do we wanna go somewhere else? I don't know. The issue with Lakeford property is the, the, uh, big chunk of ground is really high water table. And I just don't know if it'll support a big porch complex. It's taking a lot of work to build it, but.
Yeah, and I, to, to that point, I think, um, those are all realities that we, you know, we need to get into once you know, we got into some of those conversations, potential partnerships. But also, um, man, just having the options, the flexibility is, is huge. Not to say that you couldn't trade that for other ground that makes sense, or, you know, develop certain parts of it in a way that, you know, um, contemplates that high water table. You know, maybe you have fields in a certain location, so on and so forth, but yeah, just a, just an incredible, uh, piece of ground uh, that, uh, you know, was ident, was identified and potential for, for that type of thing. Then where we skip, skip to the, uh, the indoor sports complex, again, way, way down the road, but, um, could be brought forward, who knows? Partnerships, uh, you know, the city of McCall is exploring these, these concepts. Certainly, the, the school district has a need for indoor space. There's demand in the valley for something like this, whatever that may be. So.
What this does is it sets aside the ground, so we know this isn't something we're gonna sell, because there's future capacity here.
Yeah.
I mean, the things that we're not identifying, those might be sellable assets. These are ones that we wanna keep because there's future opportunities here.
Yes.
And then also, I do know that, like, the requirements for sewer or for septic are changing every day. I mean, technology is improving and growing in the way that they're doing things, so five years down the road, who knows what a sewer would be?
Yeah.
Or what the capacity would be there, so.
Great points. And then again, this could be a, a, another significant opportunity with the auditorium district overlay. Uh, to support something like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joanna had a really good point about, well, this, that's one part of an auditorium, but we could do things up there too, and great way to sell that. That's a great point.
And it could, again, not, not, certainly there's always the political reality, but, you know, you give, you give county-wide opportunity.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, and then Commissioner Thompson, your, your point about, uh, the justice facility, the jail and the E O C. Yeah, just with the projection, uh, projected growth of the county, expansion is inevitable, uh, in these, in these, uh, facilities. Again, fortunately, you have ground, uh, identified, um, even site planned to make expansions possible. So really, it's just the capital cost. There's not, you know, site selection or procurement, uh, land procurement that's needed, so again, kudos to the, the county forefathers that you just have good assets. And then, um, you recall, this wasn't in, in great detail and it didn't make the list, but obviously you have a block for future opportunities as well. There was a, um, an analysis, albeit high level, that's in the plan uh, to give you some, at least some thoughts on what that could be. And, and again, seeing that as an economic development opportunity for sure, as well as a potential, um, affordable housing opportunity for uh, county employees, other, uh, service entities, so on and so forth, so. So that's the, that's the meat of the plan. And just kind of in conclusion, there were a few other recommendations that, that came out loud and clear from the process. We talked about this first one, which is, uh, regular, um, meetings with, uh, area participants. Particularly the government entities, I think, would be, would be huge. Um, I think in the plan, we called it a, uh, the county is the logical lead for that. Just given your breadth and scope, um, to convene that, set an agenda. Uh, there were things that were, uh, brought up in the process, so things like common pa, policy, uh, land use. Uh, uh, bond initiative, bonded levy initiatives, things like that, that could be a regular conversation. Uh, so that everybody gets on the same page in that regard.
Cameron, in regards to that, so I did have an initial meeting with a group that is going to discuss regional conversations, is what we're gonna call it.
Sweet.
Um, at the economic summit on November sixth. To see if we can find partnerships throughout the region, um, most, you know, importantly, municipalities. But having the Economic Development Council take that as a third party and keep, you know, the county out of it as far as the county taking the lead. So the E D C would actually coordinate those efforts and bring all of the municipalities and all the entities together to have those conversations. So we have started that process.
It's awesome. Yeah. So as long as that's happening, I think that's a, that could be a, a major win from this process, is just getting people on the same page. Yeah, and to that point, uh, Commissioner Mopin, yeah, review and coordination of existing plans, areas of city impact, major developments, economic trends, growth and other demographic updates, bond and levy elections, um, infrastructure needs, service coordination, partnerships and collaboration on projects, and then policy coordination. Just could be kind of standing agenda items for that meeting.
See that page on our stuff, Cameron?
Page thirty-four?
Oh, I'm so sorry. It did not make it in your.
Well, let me see.
I print the, okay.
There we go.
Got you, got you the right version. That's, that's important. So anyway, that's, that's, that's a big takeaway from this. I'm so happy that, to hear that you guys have already, you're already taking that by the bull by the horns. Uh, the other is, uh, regular communication with industry and business leaders. So, kind of goes without saying, they, they felt the same way. The ski resorts, uh, the major employers were just thrilled that this was happening. That they were involved.
We have an economic summit every year and they're all invited, and that's where that type of ongoing conversation is supposed to be happening. Um, we struggle a little bit with getting them there. So did they talk about a format or? I mean, you really can't do it at a commissioner's meeting where you're calling everybody and doing it as public forum, so it's kind of interesting to me that they talk about this and that we provide a forum and they don't show up, so hopefully.
Yeah, it's a fair, it's a fair question. I don't, you know, I don't know that we got to that level of detail with the stakeholders. Obviously, what we did was, we just got the list from, from Doug and Johanna and, and set those up and had those meetings, so I apart from just taking somebody to lunch and, hey, what's, what's on your plate? That's basically what, what occurred.
I'll make sure that the list is in here, and then I will make sure and reach out and say, hey, are you coming on November sixth?
Yeah, that was, uh, one of the major holdups that we ran into in trying to organize this. What type of forum do you host all of the community leaders? And does it need to be a public meeting with an agenda? The economic summit had happened right prior to our very first meeting, so we thought this is a great, once a year time to meet, but when do we pick the other times? You know, quarterly, is it gonna be biannually? So it, I think it's a discussion that we should have, uh, potentially at the summit next week or in two weeks, that would, it would be good for our community, for us all to be on the same page. And while everybody at the meetings, you know, I'll reiterate what Cameron said, they said, gosh, I'm really glad that we're having this discussion. What is the proper format to have that in the future? We, that still needs to be worked out.
Yeah, and I, I think just kind of in, in deference, how you do that, I think is less important as to that you do it, right? And I think you, you do have willing participants, it's just scheduling it, finding time that makes sense for everybody, and, and is it one-offs? You know, one meeting a year and then more formal one next, I don't know, but.
I think the original conversations will take a lot of that into account, because that, the very first meeting is gonna be, what do you want? What is the agenda?
Yeah.
You know, coming. And I think quarterly is probably gonna be the way that we do it. And you just host, I'm Cascade host, and Donley host, and McCall host, and, you know, just try and rotate those meetings, but the content of that will be fluid, as far as what does a region need at that moment in time.
Right? Um, and then, uh, another major recommendation is, as you recall, underpinning this entire process is, is public engagement. So just making sure that at every step of the process, there's always an alert, uh, you know, a notice, uh, posting, a press release of what the county is doing and where it's at in the process. Just, it, it's just invaluable to keeping the public in the loop.
Is that something that you would put on like a website?
Absolutely, so.
That's enough, but.
We've def, we've definitely.
Letting McKenzie run with it. I mean, she'll social media post it, she'll put it on the website, you know, I mean, that, she did put a snippet in this next upcoming newspaper that we're doing this work and that it's drawing to conclusion, and, oh, I think giving it to our P R person to run with, that's why she's on board.
Yep. And you'll see, um, obviously, we're, you know, we're on retainer. So it's little things here and there, we're totally please let us continue to, to do that. We'll, we have a great re, relationship, working relationship with McKenzie. So that, you know, if there's anything technical, she has it, you know, it's, it's well-written, so on and so forth.
Somebody needs to tell her what needs to be told, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think as we, you'll, you'll, you'll feel this as we start to move down the plan, that there, there's these just things that need to continue to be educated. And, and as, uh, you know, things are accomplished, you know, just like today, you know, assuming that the commission wants to adopt the plan, that's, that's newsworthy. And we'll make sure that that gets out and, and folks know that it's, that it's in place and moving. And then, uh, the other major one is just an annual update to the plan, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, in a little bit more detail. Oh, and then, you guys, we, we already had mentioned the, uh, the idea of other, uh, planning of other levies and stuff, and we'll, we'll make sure to follow up on that.
Yeah, the first one is this week, weeks.
November seventh.
EMS.
EMS district will be on the ballot.
And I think that conversation is great region-wide, so that everybody knows what everybody's doing. And, you know, taxpayers are gonna have to find out which is most priority to them, and that's gonna be difficult when everybody's doing it at the same time.
So might as well coordinate that.
Absolutely.
Approach the community as, as a, as a, you know, a unified governmental body, so that you're being conscientious of, of the public, of the taxpayer in all those conversations. So again, kudos to the, to the county to, to lead out in that. Um, a couple of things that we did wanna point out, uh, just real quickly, just the just really the, the, the limited, uh, funding and capacity for the roads department ongoing. Um, and want to kind of bring up, uh, a finer point to this, is, is you all deliberate is how do we get to a point where we have a self-sustaining road? Service, if you will. Uh, we've put on here some, some things that others have used to, to great effect. Uh, a very likely one, uh, that works great, at least for growth going forward. Not your existing needs and your current condition, but going forward is the idea of development impact fees. That's something that's commonly used, uh, for, uh, for roads, especially as communities are rapidly growing. So that's something that, uh, we would highlight there. Uh, C I Ds, B I Ds, L I Ds are another option if there's specific, uh, improvements that need to be made, that property owners are willing to assess themselves. Those can make, uh, make those projects go.
But just ask O B with Arnie coming on next week, if he would put together a one sheet, this is what an L I D is and this is how you get it approved. So whether it's an L I D or whether it's a community infrastructure district, we do have homeowners association subdivisions that want to improve their roads, and therefore, they want information on how to do that.
Um, it's in the plan.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, have all those, all those tools in the toolkit.
Cause he was gonna work on that.
But yeah, if, if anyone wants additional detail, we're happy to engage with them and, and help them figure those things out, but
Okay.
Again, the county's a, a logical entity to help administer that. Again, an L I D, for example, is not a liability of the county, not obligation of the county, it's its own district. And those assessments are just made on the properties within that district.
But the county collects them and.
County collects it, administers it.
And only the full-time homeowners get to vote on it.
Correct. So, yeah, if you want, it's like, if you want the road, you gotta get your people.
We have some subdivisions that wanna do it, and they've only got two or three full-time residents, the rest is all second homeowners, so Arnie, you're gonna be paying for a new route.
So, yes, definitely, a, any, um, you know, unincorporated county subdivisions makes a ton of sense for, for them. Um, anything obviously within a city, um, you'd, it would need to be a partnership with that locale to make that happen, but again, my point in this is to bring emphasis to this department in particular and the needs associated with that. I don't know if Johanna or Doug had any other, anything else to say on this one, but just that we felt like it was, it's prudent again to make sure that all, all cards are on the table.
So, oh, I won't talk about that right now, but, you know, there's, there's just some large bonds. And if we go after a levy, as the county, you almost, you know, the cities aren't gonna go for that, because they already have large bonding needs with sewer and water and all those other things. And so, you know, road districts, that whole conversation comes back up again. But then you gotta share revenue with the cities, and is that enough to run a road? So that's a large conversation to have.
Yeah, it arguably is one that, you know, fits right in with those biannual government meetings, is, hey, look, do we, how do we coordinate this? How do we deliver these services? You know, and this is easy for me to say, so I'll say it. Um, maybe not as easy for you all to say, but public needs have to be paid for. And you have, obviously, we need to be conscientious of the people and the tax burden. And you have, obviously, we need to be conscientious of the people and the tax burden. That's, that's, that's very, you know, gotta be fr- front of mind. But if people want certain amenities, those don't just magically appear. So that the funding, finding the proper funding stream, charting the, the proper strategy that makes the most sense and is the least, least impactful possible, I think is a, is an important discussion. And, you know, consideration for everybody involved in that, in this conversation.
And our constituents would say needs versus wants, so therefore we have to make sure that what we have.
Prioritizing the needs. Great point. And then as promised, just this last page is, where do we go from here? So given you the, kind of the detail there for the next, you know, three to four or five years of the plan. So there's, as we discussed with earlier, the, there's the financial policy and procedure and cash management stuff with, with Johanna. That's all under our retainer, so there's, there's no cost for that. They implement, implement the plan for the Gold Dust property, that's, you know, the imminent thing that we, you know, need to remind and get rolling. And then the, the plan to annually update this plan. So it's gold that Gus falls off, it's constructed, start to move into the next. Updating the plan annually is really important. You'll see here, there's some specific things that will be included in that update. An economic update and forecast, growth projection, and then a reconvening, just a meeting of the citizens committee to reevaluate the plan and where we're at. As Johanna talked about, and we've talked about public engagement, particularly to the courthouse project and then the fairgrounds. Again, those two are, would be separately scoped projects, but we'd love to get those rolling in the near future as well, so.
My understanding, you've been working with Jeff on kind of downsizing the Gold Dust facility. We come pretty solid yet with the dimensions and ability.
Where that's at.
That's with.
Inside architects.
And you just received an email from Jeff.
Under, yeah. It sure has worked, yeah, that was our understanding that there was some refinement to that to make sure we're being cost conscious.
Oh, gosh, when do you know? About a thing about a boom.
Don't mess around.
Don't mess around.
Thank you, this just makes my heart happy. Thank you, Johanna and Douglas for all of your hard work on this, this has been a, it's been a productive year.
It is so important.
We've really enjoyed working with, with Clearwater and I do believe this is an action item on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with pride, I would move that we approve the Uvalde County Master Facility Plan and Comprehensive Financial Plan.
Good, absolutely.
And moved to the second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye, aye, aye.
Starting to roll.
Yeah, this is, this is huge. So again, just appreciate the opportunity and again, I would echo Johanna's comment. This is, there's been a lot of work, but there's a lot more work to come and we're just excited for where it all takes us. It's going to take the community though, so.
He's good to pass some bombs to.
We're already gray, so therefore.
We're already brave?
We're already gray.
That was from one daughter, thank you.
Commissioners, just for the record, we will need to have Clearwater Financial come back to renew, I think, any type of agreement for fiscal year 2024. That is a matter that's going to be brought back to the.
Yes, thank you, Greg. Yeah, so you will, you'll see that annual renewal for our retainer here next month. Thank you.
I already have a budget 2025 list started. Perfect.
Yeah, it's gonna.
Thoughts organized.
Don't blink, it'll happen pretty quickly, so.
Awesome.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, thank you guys, I'm sitting here looking at the plans of the bill and you go, this is going to work. Good.
Awesome, awesome.
All right, well, Mabel, I hope you enjoyed today, thanks for coming by.
Thanks for doing all your dad's work for him. Thanks for bringing her, you gotta have a, you know, a little smile on the room sometimes.
I love, I love it when she can come and not be like other kids. She drew, she drew the lucky lottery ticket.
So you think that was lucky, Dad?
Was that a little brother or a little sister?
Little brother.
Little brother?
Calvin.
Calvin.
Nice, it's a blessing. Okay, well, you two have a fun afternoon.
Thank you all. Appreciate you.
Got it.
Yep.
Yeah, drive safe.
Cameron, we'll be in touch.
Jamie, come on up, our next agenda item is an action item. This is a discussion decision regarding the veteran service officer to be part-time employee or a contractor. And I would like to hear your thoughts.
I mean, for myself, I think it, I, I can't do employee because it's going to be a conflict of interest to where I can't do my other work.
Kind of what we thought, how are you going to do other work and work for us? Who's going to keep track of the hours and all that kind of stuff?
So I think, I think best interest would be a contract employee.
Well, the next question is, do you have access to any kind of a contract?
I don't.
Did we?
This is something.
Yeah, I think Mr. Oki.
Oki's going to build one?
He probably would, I, I mean, we would have to put a request in, but I believe that he has a, a format that could be utilized.
You had mentioned, I think, the last time we saw you, that you knew other service officers that had, were contractors and I thought maybe you could.
Right, now.
All of them and see if they.
I'm trying, like, why is everybody so hard to talk to?
Sure, Ogle, have some.
No, I've emailed, I went through and I emailed all of the veteran service officers that had county email addresses. Cause I was like, tell me what that looks like and I don't want to have a reply, so I don't know.
Jamie, if you were under contract, I mean, you, just in your statements, your hours fluctuate, your workload fluctuates every month. In and on month to month. What would you do, a contract that was, that was just by the hour or would you guestmate or what would you do?
I think what we've been doing, I, works for me, there's some months where obviously I'm a little bit lower and there's some months where it's a little bit higher, but like, for instance, I can't, it's, it's hard to throw a number on, you know, going over to the first responders day and giving out cards, so that's just time.
Sure.
You can throw it, you know, you can throw a number on that, but then that's not visiting per se veterans unless they're, you know, volunteers with veterans or the fire guys.
I think we have to be careful with that too because then it gets closer and closer to being an employee. We have contractual labor laws, we have to be really careful, contract labor versus employee.
Remind you, we're doing six hundred a month now. And is that working?
I still think it's a little bit low, but I was kind of stepping my way up from his two hundred that he did for like fifteen years, I think it was. Which, for what he was doing, I think that that was, well, I still thought he should have come up a little bit over the years because he started at two hundred and when he left, he was still at two hundred, so.
I think for the contract, we would need to know exactly what you're doing so we can actually lay out that these will be the things that we require you do as this position. And then that kind of also then would speak to what is the salary for these jobs that you're actually accomplishing. So I think that would be working with our prosecuting attorney's office. And, I mean, I, I'm happy to go up to eight hundred a month or whatever it takes, you know, to accomplish the jobs that we actually lay out. So you might look at the things.
That I did look at is I compared, so I went through and I looked at the census information for how many veterans we have in the county. And I also looked at Madison, Bingham, Teton, Jefferson, Limhi, I think they're all over and it's the only people that go back to me. Bonneville and Bannock, so Madison and Fremont County are both full-time VSOs. And they have the least number, so I thought that was interesting. Bonneville and Bannock have eight, Bonneville has eight thousand veterans and Bannock has four thousand veterans as of the census in 2021. And they're both full-time VSOs. And then Teton, Jefferson and Limhi, Teton comes in at three hundred and sixty-six, Jefferson comes in at a thousand sixty-five and Limhi came in at eight hundred and sixty-five, so all right around that thousand mark.
What are we?
What's that?
What are we?
We are one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. And so, but that's full-time residents, keeping in mind our fluctuation in summer and how many. Find out what I'm doing, so.
And how many are you actually helping right now?
I didn't pull off, yeah, I didn't pull off that respect, that'd probably been a good number. But my hope is that over time I'm able to reach out to most. And those are the nodes, right? Those are the veterans that we know are up here, the receiving veterans services that are not the ones that are kind of up here.
And that's what I'm saying, the escalation in pay goes with an escalation in the number of contacts that you're making. You know, I mean, I think that that's important, that we show the taxpayers that we are, you know, servicing our veterans and it's growing every day. And so therefore we need to grow the capacity and the finances.
Did you see the commissioner reports that I sent you guys out and we jumped from what Mike was seeing to what I'm seeing right now? Have a chance to.
I didn't see that.
Sent it out to everyone, I sent the last four commissioner reports.
On Monday, the sixteenth, commissioners.
Starting when I took over. Two was the first one. When I took over in December, from December to February, there were thirteen initial visits, which was thirteen people that I initially saw for the first time for a specific type of benefit. And then the follow-up visits, oh, at the time I wasn't documenting, but multiple. Later I figured out I probably ought to start documenting. So then it was the thirteen initial visits, but if you look at the follow-on months, you know, that was right when I took over from Mike, the August of two thousand twenty-two. Nine starts of service, twenty-six follow-ups. And then you go to February, thirty-nine new outreach visits or new startup claims and sixty-eight follow-ups. As people kind of figured out I was here. And then there were thirty-three and fifty follow-up visits, so it's definitely going up. Once people found out that I had access through, in the very beginning, I didn't have access to the vet respect system. And about the time I started being able to pick up and, and review claims and look at stuff for people and pull down their DDG board teams, that's when everybody really started going, this is more than just meeting with the state service officer that comes up once a month. So the numbers have substantially gone up since I started doing that part. And then over time, you know, going down to the trainings and learning the different pieces to all the benefits. Cause in the beginning, I mean, I'll be honest, I didn't know a lot of the benefits and then as you learn, I knew that they were possible, but I didn't know how to do it. So just kind of learning and growing with the position, the numbers are going up.
Aren't you a fellow veteran?
What's that? I am a veteran.
Well, I am too, but.
Even though I, I'd like to say I know all those benefits out there.
But I can see where veteran to veteran, they're looking not only at you, but they're also looking at somebody they're making a relationship with. It's going to be around a while and, yeah, they're going to tell their buddies or whatever and, and I can see where this could exponentially get larger and and it's good, it's a good resource, huge resource for these veterans. Especially coming out of war time, like a lot of these, like my son, a lot of them have come out of.
So if I were to forward this to Oki, your, your reports, that tells him kind of what you're doing currently. And maybe you could work with him then, is there something else that you'd like to add to this? That type of thing, so we can build a contract, so we know what you're doing, you know what you're supposed to be doing. And then each year we'll have to renew that contract, but then that's when we can look at the fiscal side of things and look at the progression of how many people you're helping. And I think that makes the most sense.
And I think what we need from you is just a dollar figure. Hey, I, I can work off X amount a month.
So I guess by. Just open it up for a contractor to tell you how much they want.
Gives us a starting point.
Right, so, I mean, I guess I do have a couple of questions when it comes to that, right? So the vet respect system that I'm working off of is, you guys are paying for that because it's only open to the county, it's not open to a contractor. So I couldn't purchase that system and keep that on going. So if that's something that you guys are still willing to do, I hope.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be.
So what is that? Explain that to me.
It's what, four hundred dollars?
I think it's four hundred dollars, it's the software that allows me access to the state system.
Oh, I follow you, okay, okay.
And then I know, Jamie, there was concern about having a legitimate email secured, did you get that all figured out?
I did not, no, you guys were gonna, or I think, I think you were gonna ask that email.
Yeah, and typically we've never given a county email to a contracted employee.
We just can't. I think, Jamie, if you had something that was, you know, veteran services officer, you know, something that would.
So the, I did look that up on the count, or on the state statutes. And under the title sixty-five, the servicemaster, service members, veterans, spouses, independents, service officer aid for veterans. It said, under sixty-five, I think it's sixty-five, six oh two, says, "The Board of County Commissioners shall fix the compensation for a county contribution to the salary of the service officer providing the individual with an office and necessary equipment, therefore, in the same manner as provided any other county officer under provisions of thirty-one one thousand one Idaho code and shall make provisions in the budget for the employment of such services officer and the expenses and proper maintenance of such an office." I feel like under that, I don't know. Email? That's technically part of the office.
There's ways that you can secure your email without it being Valley County email, it's just a matter of buying the right security software.
Right, but then that increases my cost, I have to, where I'm trying to kind of get what that is. If I'm having to go more than just Gmail, that increases my cost.
That's right.
And to me, you know, you come in and, hey, I've got, you guys are paying me six hundred, I got five hundred in costs, this isn't working, we can see those. See your costs, but I did notice in your reports that you're working in Boise County and Adams County, are they throwing any money at your salary?
So I'm only, so I had one guy from Boise County because they don't have a veteran service officer. But he goes to our legion here, that's how he found out about me. Adams County go, a lot of those folks up in Numedos go up to the legion up there in McCall and that's how they found out about me. So those are the kind of outliers, you know, you get one or two that, a couple of second homers from, I don't, you know, wherever. Haiti County or whatever, come up on the summer and they find out about me and so I'm willing to help them because they're here through the summer. So that's not a, it's not a common thing.
It's, the data's going to be hard to use to comp and figure out what your compensation is because it's so up and down.
And again, that would be something you'd charge Valley County for anyway, if you want to help those guys, that's great. But, you know, our contract will state, you need to service this many veterans, you know, at a minimum, you know, with these types of services. And if she does something outside of that, that's really on her, it's not, not a per hour fee. So, you know, we would be charging for the gentleman from Adams or Boise, that's just kind of.
And that's why I broke them out separately on those commissioner reports, as I said, you know, there was one guy up here, one guy from there. They weren't necessarily Valley County, but because they were attending our legions or.
And I don't have a hangup on that as far as, to me, the, your goal or our goal is to service the vets. Whether they're coming here for the summer, they're here camping or whatever they need, I think that's the, that's the purpose why you're doing this. So I don't have any issue whether they're Valley County or out of county, unless you're spending three-fourths of your time in Adams County or Boise County and then. And then, you know, those guys got to step up, too. What I'd like to see is, okay, I'm spending three hundred dollars a month for my computer, my email, my security, all the stuff I need to do to do my job. And then bring that back to us and we can readjust your compensation for that, but we kind of need data to do that.
Right. No, absolutely. And that's why I wasn't sure if if it was possible under this, if I could just get one of the Valley County emails. Or, and then if not, that's fine, I can go out and find some.
And I think if you get a hold of Jeremy, our IT guy, he could probably suggest, suggest some really good secure, security to buy for your email address. Um, but to go put it on the counties is like, he's like, no, we don't do that. So.
Even though they very specifically say that it it's no different than any of the other county officer.
I think we need to turn that over to our prosecuting attorney.
Yeah, I was gonna ask. It is sixty-five, six oh two?
So it is sixty-five, six oh one, and six oh two.
So, and then there's a thirty-one, one thousand one?
And then this one is thirty-one, one thousand one.
I'll do some look on that.
The only reason I brought up the thirty-one, one oh one is because it cites it in here as where the, um, any other, you know, the same manner as any other county officer. Under the provisions of this one.
And I would assume like some of these counties that they look like they're full-time. Yeah, then I think we need to bring in-house and do that. But I don't think we have three thousand vets that we're dealing with.
No, we do. Um, ours comes in at, what was it, one thousand two hundred? So I mean, it's, and that's, again, that you're known, because it also says there's only twenty-five female vets, and I must know more than half of them, because. I don't think that number is right, so.
No.
I think we just work together and try and find something that's mutually agreeable and just get a contract started and move forward, so.
And Oki's in the back. He's kind of been listening to this. My philosophy is kind of like hers. Let's keep talking. If you get to where you think you need more, let us know. We'll work with you on that and go that direction.
How do you find out who's vets in this county?
Say it again?
How do you find out who's veterans in this county?
A lot of it's kind of word of mouth. Um, obviously, you've got, you're kind of, your two base is with the legions. So like, for instance, over the weekend, I was hunting and, I mean, around the fire, we pulled up on a big group of guys that were hunting. And we just stopped and chatted and, and it just, it, you know, it comes up, right? You get talking and and I said, hey, I'm a veteran service officer in Valley County. And they're like, oh, really? I didn't even know we had one of those. So every time you go anywhere, you just kind of talk a little bit and carry my cards with me.
You carry your challenge coin?
What's that? I don't. I'm there. I do not have my coin. Do you?
I don't.
Might bring one to the next meeting.
What happens if you show your challenge card?
Your challenge coin? If I show mine and she doesn't have hers, she owes me a beer.
Hell of a deal. Give me one, too, will you? I want one of those.
Those are AA coupons. What are you talking about?
I don't carry those to work. I think anyone that falls under AA has to do push-ups.
Oh, got it. Ryan, I'm sending you a email right now. So we can work on a contract with Jamie. He'll look at that.
Hey, are we good?
I think we're good.
Thank you, though, for all your energy and effort towards this. It's been great. I think Mike did a great job, but I don't think he was quite as social as you are, let me put it that way.
Well, and 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 if you look at the, you know, not to say anything bad, right, but look at the age difference, right? He didn't have that computer experience and he looked to the state service officer that came up to be that computer guy. And once I realized really how easy it was to be able to get into that state of Idaho system and the fact that the counties have access to it, that's huge.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm waiting on, it's Monday, so I'm waiting on two decisions that just came out over the weekend that could possibly give two veterans a chance to be employed. Hopefully, here by the end of the day.
Wow.
Yeah, you know, and these were, these were some tough ones. One of them I've been working on since the day I took over, so. Awesome.
And these guys, if it weren't for you, they wouldn't have that resource. You know, I I know David's dad, he he never would do that. And David, when he got in the military, he realized what was going on. And when he got out, said, Dad, you're going with me. Because he had aged orange and stuff from Vietnam, and he got his dad, I think he got him a hundred percent disability when it was all done.
The Agent Orange is coming in. So the thing that really kind of surprised me when I was doing this research was that, um, Vietnam veterans, it shouldn't surprise me based on our population age. But the Vietnam veterans are the highest by, huge. They're saying that we have the one thousand two hundred thirteen veterans and almost six hundred of them are Vietnam veterans. And I know I don't have that many Vietnam veterans on my panel.
I wouldn't doubt it.
That's a he.
These guys are my.
That's my next target list, right? Because that's where all of the big pushes coming out right now. So.
They're in their seventies now.
Right. And a lot of them are sitting on Social Security, not making a lot of money, and they don't have, some of them, you know, didn't come back to greatest experience. So to be able to bring them in and say, you know, these services are available, to appreciate what you did.
Absolutely.
It's huge. So I didn't realize there was that many. I knew there was a lot, but I didn't realize there was that many. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, thanks again.
Thanks, Jamie.
In communication, we'll work through it.
It'll be, I'm guessing, probably about four weeks before we have something prepared, but we'll definitely.
Oh, yeah.
Get it on the agenda. I'll keep in close contact with you. I'm guessing the middle of November or the end of November is when.
And by then I will be out of CMC, so actually, I'm still staying in just a little bit, but.
Okay.
Um, but use my, the private email address.
Okay, fantastic.
Figure out a way to create one of the Gmail.
Okay.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.